Okay, it is 7:03 and I hereby call to order the September 2015 meeting of the Village of Tibbely Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. We'll start with the Clerk's report.
Clerk's office has sale of 629 trash cans. Please go to point CBA meeting, 194th Conch. We have the water sewer bills, we need some warranty for those. I attended one government accounting class given by the Officer of State Controller and number two year olds. We also have holiday coming up on October 12th, we'll be closed for August 6th.
Thank you very much. Moving on to approval of the minutes from previous meetings. We have regular board meetings from August 19th. So one set of minutes, you've all had a chance to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the August 19th board meeting?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Ezroti and seconded by Trustee Schneider. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the minutes are accepted. Moving on to Treasurer's reports.
The general fund, we loaned spent $39,863.3 cents. Water fund gives $3,939.40. Sewer fund gives $1,635.35. And the capital fund had $9,1636, or total of $46,414.14.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna try and turn off this air conditioner. Is that one on?
Yeah.
That one's off?
No, the button is...
It's a little hard to hear, I think, when they're on.
Lind is trying to use the remote.
Alright. Thank you. We've heard the Treasurer's report. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
As a rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Major, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bruno. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the report is accepted. Moving on to payment of the bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills this month?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Major. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to a zoning report.
I'm the proud owner of a summary sheet, so I don't have to crawl through this report. Our zoning enforcement officer issued five new permits, inspected 21 outstanding permits and applications for CFO and applications for certificate of completions. He issued one CFO and 14 certificates of completion. And he responded to four complaints. The complaints that were responded to include a complaint about brush back behind the cancer restaurant, and that has been cleared out. A neighbor complained about the roll-off container that's parked on Friendship Street, and according to the zoning enforcement officer, that complaint has been closed out. So I apologize, I don't know quite how that was taken care of. And there was also a complaint about trash at 26 Pine Street, which appears to have been addressed. So he is following up on complaints and looking for these incidents.
Thank you, Trustee Ezroti. Clerk Canelo, did we have any correspondence this month? So now we arrive at the time for public comment on agenda items. I hope you've had a chance to pick up the agenda. I'll just review them quickly, so you know something about what I'm asking you to comment on. Approval of Janelli Maintenance Contract. This is a $34.99 a month maintenance contract for the fire alarm system in this building that went in maybe two years ago. Number two, approval of Department of Public Works Union Contract. Every three years, the village has to renegotiate the union contract with our Department of Public Works workers. We have three individuals in the union. This process started in April. Negotiations went on for about two months, and the contract agreement has finally been reached, finalized, and we will adopt it. This will govern how their compensation time, their wages, clothing allowance, et cetera, for the next three years. And the next two are related to a community development block grant application. This is a grant offered by Duchess County every year. Over the years, Tibbely's done pretty well with these. We've won block grants to make improvements in the park. A few years ago, we did 900 feet of sidewalk around the village. For a couple of years, we did not win this grant. We had put in applications to do smart meters, and we did an application, I think, twice to try and do a water main from the bridge out towards 9G where most of our water comes from. We would like to do one this year, and the board's idea is to put in a proposal to make repairs on Pine Street. So Pine Street has currently pretty poor sidewalks, abysmal drainage. It is sort of the missing piece in our downtown loop. I think we've made a lot of improvements recently on Broadway. We also now have on Pine Street, a county donated bus shelter, a county donated bike rack, and we've already had one county CDBG grant for park improvements. So our strategy here is to sort of say, look, we are sending good money after good money, and we want to keep building this area up. Also, our municipal parking lots, as you exit out onto Pine Street, there's chronically a lake where there shouldn't be a lake, right, as you come out on Pine Street. Again, it's related to the drainage there. So our idea is to go in for the full $150,000 award and spend every penny on trying to, you know, get Pine Street up to snuff. Also, since we've moved the bus shelter over there, and the buses are now running over there, you may have noticed what that's doing to the gravel shoulder, and I think we need a proper bus shoulder there that's paved and that can support the weight of those vehicles. So that would be in there as well. So a CDBG application requires a public hearing. That would be number three, and we would propose to hire Crawford and Associates for a specific task of preparing this application for us. So those are the three, four items of regular business. Is there any public comment? Yes?
I think that's a great idea, about improvement Pine Street. I'd love to see that little parking lot blacktopped all the way to the ball field one day. Tibbely owns that, right? That's...
That way, Catherine Lane, that way?
I don't know, you know, all the way down to where the backstop, you know, if that's a Tibbely owns that.
Yep.
You know, ultimately, that would be awesome.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know.
Well, this would be on the way there, right?
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea.
Good. Any other comment on the agenda items? Okay, so moving on to regular business. Number one, approval of Janelli Maintenance Contract. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Motion was made by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezroti, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, all opposed? And the motion carries. Number two, approval of Department of Public Works Union Contract. The board reviewed this in detail in our workshop. Is there a motion to approve the union contract?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Major, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezroti, who worked pretty hard on this negotiation with me.
Worked hard as the mayor, but...
Glad to have the help. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I also vote aye, all opposed? And the contract will be accepted. Setting a public hearing for the community development block grant application. We propose to do this at the October workshop. That's at 7:00 PM on October 14th. It's a Wednesday. It'll be in the mayor's office, and if we have more people, we'll do it in here, and if we have a lot of people, we'll do it upstairs, but...
Is a good date for it, because the application has to be done by the end of October, correct?
Uh, yes. So that would be October 14th, 7:00 PM for the public hearing, for people to give us feedback, response about this sort of Pine Street idea. Is there a motion to set the public hearing for that date?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Schneider, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Ezroti, any discussion? I'd like to say keep our fingers crossed, and good luck to Tibbely.
Mary, would you like to do a roll call on that since it's going to be public?
Happy to. Trustee Major?
Yes.
Trustee Ezroti?
Yes.
Trustee Schneider?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bruno?
Definitely, yes.
I also vote aye. And the public hearing is set for 7:00 PM, October 14th. Motion to hire Crawford and Associates to prepare a community development block grant application. Crawford and Associates is going to charge the village $1,000 to prepare that application. We had them do a CFA grant application back in July, which we'll know about in October. That was $1,500. Apparently, this is a smaller and simpler application. So is there a motion to hire Crawford and Associates for that purpose?
So moved.
Motion was made by Trustee Major, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Schneider, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye, all opposed? And the motion carries. We will engage Crawford and Associates to prepare that community development block grant application. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, October 21st, at 7:00 PM, with a workshop proceeding at 6:00 PM here at the historic Watts de Peister Hall. And the regular workshop will be Wednesday, October 14th, at 7:00 PM. And again, that will be our public hearing for the CDBG. Moving on to committee reports, Deputy Mayor Bruno.
Okay. Few things that I have, was that back in August, we had the youth skate competition, very well attended, and so many of the youth really enjoyed themselves that day, competition, a lot of camaraderie we could see with the kids. Few other things, we are now going into fall, which brings thought of Halloween, and would you believe it, Winterfest. So Halloween, we will jump in with the library, October 24th. They're having this multicultural day from 10:30 to 12:00, and it's, they're going to have food, and some parents of different cultures that will be coming in, so we will join them and then have a Halloween celebration after that. And Winterfest, December 12th. So for each event, if anyone is interested or can volunteer some help, by all means, please contact me through the Clerk's office. We'd love to have many hands to help with a couple of events. And that, that's it for now.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and sometimes, a lot of work goes into these events, Winterfest, Halloween, and sometimes residents have some comments, even criticisms afterward. And if you don't like how it's worked, or think something else should go on, you should come out and help us. Thank you. Trustee Ezroti.
Speaking of events, in about two weeks, we're going to have street painting on Saturday morning in Tibbely, starting at 9 o'clock, or for those of you who feel inspired to help paint the streets, we'll start doing that at about 7:30. We lay out the squares, and we have big long rollers, and it's kind of magical, because I always ask for volunteers, and I don't hear very much, and somehow that morning may show up. So don't feel that you have to have made a commitment, just come, it's a lot of fun. And we get it done faster if we have more people there, and I'm adding more rollers to our equipment this year. If you haven't seen them yet, I've got plenty of these. We have some absolutely fabulous postcards this year. This is Andre San Mion's picture that he did last year of Maya Angelou in memoriam. This one, I'm not sure who did this, but it's that classic Andy Wingwright photo of it, because it has the bicycle at the top. Andy tells me that the magic of this festival in Tibbely is the light, that the way the light comes in at that time in October makes for really fabulous photographic opportunities. I also got 4,000 photographs from George, forgotten his last name, in Capel, I think it is, in Red Hook, which is testimony to that particular feature. And we have here yours truly, the mayor of Tibbely, who always has the square number one at the corner, he's had that...
Long before I thought about being mayor, though.
Yeah.
There's no connection at all.
Right. But it's fun to see how this really is a community event. We have raised about three-quarters of the money that we need to do everything that we want to do this year. The library has really become engaged in this event, and they are doing a poster to commemorate 15 years of the festival, which will have photographs of some are from every year since we began. It's really a fabulous poster, and you will begin to see it out this next week in store windows, et cetera. So come. Applications are available on the village website, or you can email the village, and we'll make sure you get one.
There's actually some printed right out in the hallway here as well, that you can pick up.
Right. So I've already begun to get them. My favorite one is Irene Coons, who is Reggie Coons' wife, I believe, some of you know them. They live in Stamfordville, just at the edge of Red Hook, and she calls me every year because she doesn't have a computer or access to internet or any of the electronic means. So she calls me to get me to either mail her the application or fill it out for her, and she's going to be there. She's in square 61. We always, we know which square it is, you know, because we have this fabulous map. So this is going to be the best. It's honoring 15 years of this, and certainly honoring Linda Murphy, who got us started at this. So be there.
Am I correct that there is a Facebook page for the Tibbely Street Painting Festival?
There is. Tibbely Street Painting has a Facebook page. I have to admit that it doesn't always get updated, but I think we've got the event data updated on it now. In addition to that, I just wanted to let you know, we have a length of service award program for our fire department. The members of the department, by attending meetings, serving as directors, attending a certain number of fire events or safety events, earn 50 points, and in response to having earned that many points for a year, they get a $500 award, which goes into account, which is tax-deferred until they turn 65. And Tommy and I, and Terrence Martin, who's a member of the fire department, met with RBC Wealth Management this past week. They manage the investment of these funds. It's been a rough time in the market, so we wanted to make sure they knew what they were doing, and they have done a good job, but it hasn't, it's, the last 12 months have, we've suffered some losses in the fund, but they, it still has a 6% rate of return since inception, which is pretty good, and we will continue to monitor that. I also need to make sure that you all know, although I'm sure Tommy will tell us about it, that the fire department did win a grant of $132,000 for turnout gear, which will be, they'll be able to replace all of their turnout gear, make sure that the new firemen who are on have suits that fit them and are up to date. They do, however, have to put in $7,000 of their own money. So when you receive that request for funds for the fire department, or you notice that they're holding a breakfast, or some sort of other affair at the firehouse, that's how they come up with that money. And since they've done this fabulous job of getting $132,000, be sure to support them for the balance of that. And finally, we've had a lot going in planning, by the planning and zoning boards in the last month. Two subdivisions, this is probably indicative that the real estate market is finally beginning to recover. We've had two proposals for subdivisions of land, one to the east of, east and north of town, and one to the north and west of town, and the board is considering those. Those are always public meetings, and you will look for it. There will be some public hearings on these subdivision requests. And the zoning board of appeals has been dealing with some area variances, which are, you know, if you don't sleep all night, come to these meetings, and you'll have even a harder time, because the stuff that they have to deal with sometimes in terms of the law is pretty complicated. They're doing a very good job.
Do you have a water report, Tom?
I do have a water report. This, it's been pretty dry, so some of our wells have not been pumping at all. The Balllock well was off, the McKnight well was pumping, but at a, well, it usually pumps at about a six to seven gallon per day level. The two PW well was pumping only part of the month. The 5PW well also was only on for about six days of the month. But the 4PE and 10PE wells were pumping 14 gallons per minute, and the Woodmark well was pumping 16 to 17, which is very low for that well, for a total for the month of about between 35 and 46 gallons per minute. But we didn't meet all the water needs. Total rainfall was, this surprises me, because of how dry it felt in my garden, was actually three and a half inches in the month, but it came in, in big rainfalls about once a week. The water report shows that water quality was good. The Commissioner of Water and Sewer tests the wells once a month, and those tests came out fine. We did have two water main breaks, one on Spring Street and one on North Road in August, which was a break from July, when we had about 15 breaks.
Two minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Trustee Ezroti. Trustee Schneider, please.
I'm going to start off with just a quick review of the Greenway Grant. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, it is a matching grant that we secured that is utilized for the planning of a walkway, lighting, seating, for access down to our waterfront parcel there. It's a project that Trustee Bruno and I have been working pretty hard on. We were just going over our hours logged in there. The status of the project, I'm just going to read off, so you know where we are sitting at the moment. The conceptual design and layout work was done through multiple consultations between our engineer and Trustee, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Bruno and myself. Let's see. We did hold a public meeting to go over the conceptual drawings there, preparation of the seeker forms. There's a full EAF, I've got a whole list here, coastal assessment form, and then multiple sets of preliminary plans were created, both with a bike lane, without a bike lane, and incorporating a walkway that actually went on either the north side or the south side. The two plans will vary how many times it crosses over, keeping site distance, and the grade, taking those into consideration. We also met with the village historian to try to get some input on ways to incorporate our rich history here along that walkway. Where we stand at the moment is that we need to finalize materials, not finalize materials, we need to get input on different materials. What Deputy Mayor Bruno and I have planned to move forward with is to form a committee so that we can get input from everyone who lives here in regard to the types of materials we'd like to see used in the construction of the walkway. And I want some out-of-the-box solutions, some materials that might not otherwise be considered, to be brought into the conversation. We really want this walkway to stand out in an area where, in this Hudson River Valley, there are so many communities that stand out with their, with their access to the waterfront. I want us to stand out even a little bit further. So we're encouraging any sort of involvement, whether you are a business owner, whether you are a resident, whether you have professional background or not. The materials that we're going to be looking at, as I said, include the materials for the construction of the walkway itself, lighting fixtures, even different concepts. Mayor Griffith brought to our attention some lighting that has actually been integrated into the sidewalk, so it's almost like a glowing path down to the waterfront. So there are, there are a lot of areas of opportunity for us to really make this an amazing feature in our village. You can contact me, you can call the village hall here. I am collecting contact information. There are some candidates that we will extend an invitation to, to join the committee, but it is an open committee, and we welcome any and all contribution to it. Obviously, because it is a new venture, we do not have a meeting schedule set up as of yet. I would love names and contact information, phone or email, so that I can put a schedule together, and we can meet on a regular basis to discuss.
It can be kind of fun, because...
It can be a lot of fun.
Some of the ideas that have been generated, first of all, the question is, you know, you've got the issue of light pollution, but also you want to be able to see when you walk down there, so you have light that, that has, it's shielded and just lights the walkway, you want to be able to, to sort of lead people down that direction. These, these walkways that glow, they come from solar, they're actually, the light is generated...
It's embedded in the sidewalk itself, and you can have different hues. It's really amazing, actually, it's almost like a piece of art itself. So I can't think of a better...
And there's some challenges... And there's some challenges because the edges of the road, if those of you who walk down there regularly know, there are some drainage issues, there are changes in the level. So the walkway has to address that, either be at the level of the street or somehow suspended over it. That will determine some of the materials that can or should be used. It's really, for any of you who have a creative strength, the street can hear, it's a real opportunity.
Yeah, if I can jump in. What we're thinking about is, you know, maybe this doesn't need to be your standard six-inch reveal suburban concrete sidewalk on our beautiful descent to the river, that, you know, we should think out of the box and open our minds and have something perhaps a lot more interesting. And so the idea of this committee is that, you know, we, we generate better ideas, we get more citizen participation, and make sure that the walkway that we end up with is something that actually sort of came, you know, from this village and, and the ideas and creativity and aesthetics of this village, rather than just off the warehouse shelf. And we also need residents to be on this committee-
On tier ten.
Because this is a matching grant, and one of the best ways we can achieve our required match is by volunteer hours. So particularly if you are any sort of architect, engineer, designer, you know, we can take your going rate and log that, and that's how we generate the match. So we, we need some help there as well. Not just the ideas, but the time and, and your skills. So please get in touch with us, and we look forward to seeing what comes out of that.
I am going to just further there. If you have any historical or archaeological sensitivity, that would be welcome. We can also utilize that as a professional service there on the committee, so that would be really fantastic. As we move forward with this portion of the project, I'm actually going to be working with trustee major. The two of us will be working cohesively on the committee. She's got a lot of practical know-how and a lot of insight, so I, I welcome the opportunity to work with her moving the, the Greenway Grant forward. That being said, I'm going to move on to the village court report, the charge volume summary report for the month of August. Total charges received were four, and total charges disposed were six, with a total of $596 collected and remitted to the state comptroller. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee major.
Okay, well, the next four Saturdays, a very exciting thing is going on. The Saturday coming up is Hardscrabble in Red Hook, and if you're looking for delicious apple pie from the Omen North Inn between 11:00 and 4:00, and that's what you'll get. As always, the Tivoli Library is doing some fantastic things. On Saturday, September 26th, at 11:00, together with the Dutchess County SPCA, they're going to be doing a demonstration of responsible pet ownership. And it's for kids, kindergarten through third grade, and parents and siblings are welcome. They're going to have a demonstration dog there. And with, partnering again with Friends of Claremont and also with the Germantown Library, on Saturday, October 3rd, at the Tivoli Library, they're going to be doing an event with professor and author Jocelyn Godwin. He's written a book called Upstate Cauldron: Eccentric Spiritual Movements in Early New York State. And this should be awesome, just in terms of sort of getting, getting in the mood for Halloween as sort of a low-key way, and then ramping it up on the following weekend, October 10th, Saturday, at the Claremont Cottage. Author Michael Keane is going to talk about his book, which is called Mad House: The Hidden History of Insane Asylums in 19th Century New York. Super cool. So you can call Friends of Claremont or the Tivoli Library for information on either of those events. And that's it. So clear your calendars for the next four Saturdays.
Thank you, trustee major. I want to remind everyone about the idea of a pocket park slash trail on a parcel down here by our bridge on the southwest side. There's a county parcel there, it's approximately 100 feet of road frontage, 200 feet along the creek. The county executive, a couple of months ago, two months ago or so, contacted me about his idea. The county owns that parcel, they want to put a little trail in there, give some public access to the creek. They came and made a presentation to the board of trustees, we gave them quite a bit of feedback, we had a number of, we certainly appreciated the opportunity, but we had a number of concerns. I'd say first and foremost among them is that that park is on the opposite side of the street from the current sidewalk, and it happens to be a place where we have chronic speeding problem. And perhaps that's a tricky problem to fix before you start inviting people to walk through there and go to this new park trail. The county's coming to Tivoli on October 1st. It's a Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, and they're going to do a presentation on the third floor. And if you have any concerns about this pocket park, that's my term, that's not their term, any objections, any questions, any hopes, I would strongly encourage you to come. This is your chance to talk to Dutchess County. This village board asked somewhat strongly, and happily, they said, yes, we will come do a presentation, but that was not originally something they were going to do. I'm grateful they're going to do it. Don't miss this opportunity. And I had something else about that, but I'll come back when I remember it. So Thursday, October 1st, 7:00 PM. It'll be very similar to the presentation they made on the, the bridge last spring, which I think for those of you who were there, was a very good presentation, so looking forward to that. As I mentioned last month, the village of Tivoli is looking for a new designated engineering firm. We put out an RFP last month. We've had two mandatory, we had two dates for mandatory site visit for any firm interested in submitting a proposal. In those two dates, we had a total of 19 firms come to the village. That is a robust number, we're very excited about it. And so we will see how many of those 19 actually submit a proposal. Those are due on September 30th, and our rapid calendar will be, the proposals come in on the 30th. We'll have a review committee who will read through them all. We will schedule several, several interviews with the strongest firms. We will conduct those interviews, and hopefully, only one month from, who's helping, it's going to be the deputy mayor. Hopefully, a month from tonight, we're going to be letting you know which is going to be awarded the job of being our new designated engineer firm, so.
I would like to say that I've been on board for nine years. This is the first time we've actually properly requested a proposal and qualifications for engineering. So I'm very pleased with the process that's been set out here. It's helpful, it's useful, it gets the engineering firm to feel the seriousness of the effort. We find out a lot of things about people from this, so.
It's good to kick the tires before you buy the car.
It's good.
And fortunately for us, we just went through a very similar process in selecting the firm who's going to do the water and wastewater evaluations, so we've had a whole rehearsal of that whole process of reading the proposals, having the interviews, making the selection. And we did make a selection for that last month, Ty &amp; Bond, T&amp;B, is the firm that the board chose to do that comprehensive evaluation of our water and wastewater systems. They got in here this Monday morning at 8:00. They had a team of about eight people, and superintendent Simmons took them all around the village, and that study is now underway. It's going to take until December 31st. So it'll be going on, we'll give you recurring updates. And again, when we get that final report, the county gave us this grant to get this study done, so we can make an informed and intelligent decision as a village as to whether we want to maintain ownership of the two systems or transfer ownership to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. But the study's underway, so we'll see.
One of the interesting side stories to this is we picked the firm, and then learned that the project manager is actually from Tivoli, but the firm was located in Massachusetts, so, so it was just an interesting coincidence.
They were quite impressive on Monday morning. They, they were geared up and ready to go, so. Last Thursday night, we hosted an event, I was present, and trustee major joined me. This was billed as a, well, it's billed as pizza and politics. Pizza coming from a friend and colleague in the Bard administration, Timon Bates, who is the dean of sophomores and transfers and sort of by default off-campus students. I think they don't want to give him a third title because that probably means, you know, more money or something, but for all intents and purposes, he's the one dealing with this and cooperating in a deep way with, with me. So we hosted this event last Thursday, we had 25 students show up, we had a number of alums there, Jackie Zacko was there, and we had a two-hour and 15-minute conversation about anything and everything. My idea in putting on that event and hosting that conversation was first and foremost to continue to get the word to students about our new laws we passed over the summer, the new noise fines, the nuisance gathering law, for them to have a deterrent effect, all the students need to know about them. So it seems to me that word's gotten around, most of them kind of get it, which I'm, which I'm pleased, and probably not surprised at. Most human beings, if you explain to them the common sense, quality of life stuff, they get it. And these young Bard students were no exception, so. We will be doing another one in a month. I would like to keep doing these as long as they seem useful to the students who reside in Tivoli. You know, in addition to informing them about the laws, we asked, you know, what, what's, what's it like to be a student in the village? What do you need? That sort of thing. Now, of course, since dean Bates was there, some of their needs, most of them, are actually not for the village of Tivoli to provide, perhaps more the administration, but the administration was represented, and there was some good feedback. Other things, there was a fabulous suggestion about putting some more light in our municipal parking lot by Panzor, came from a student. It's a great suggestion, it's, it should happen. So I hope that in addition to having set some strong, real boundaries governing this village, i.e. the nuisance law, we can have some other engagement, and it's not all that, it can be this, it's going to be both. And there was a little bit of irony after that nice meeting, the next night, Friday night, was issued the first nuisance gathering ticket at a party. So I'm, I'm not surprised, we know, having been around here, we all know the crescendos and day crescendos of the student year. I'm really proud of this board, and grateful to our attorney for having gotten those laws in place over the summer so that this village would be ready for the return of the problem in September. And the first ticket's been issued. Again, in order to get that nuisance violation, you have to first get another ticket, that's the 13 triggers. So in this case, it was violation of the village noise ordinance, that's a minimum fine of $150 now. Then if it's associated with that party, that party gets their first nuisance ticket, that's $250. So the hosts of this party are going to have to think about a $400 penalty for hosting what was a big, messy, loud, disruptive party. And I hope there aren't more of these tickets written, but if there are more of those parties, they're going to be written. I also want to thank the Dutchess County Sheriff's deputies for understanding what the village is trying to accomplish here, and, and writing that ticket, and being prepared to write the next one if they need to. Related to that, I want to say, I know there are lots of Bard students watching Panda right now, there's a major safety concern as we move these parties out of the village, right? Because they're not just going to go away, 20-year-olds are going to do what they do somewhere. As we move them out of the village, it's understandable that they're going that way, out Broadway, out towards 9G. That is not safe, and that is not a good place to have a gathering of 200 people, sometimes with alcohol, so I want everyone to think about that. We as a community, Tivoli, Bard College, the students, this is going to be a process of change, and there are some, some dangerous stops along the way. So just wanted to say that. And now I'd like to open up to public comments. Matthew.
Well, I have some things, but I, I was wondering about the, you were talking about the zoning for, there's two lots that are going to be opened, subdivisions, do you, do you have any details on that, even the vaults right now, or?
There have been applications by, there's, one is just workshops, it's not really in the public domain yet. And the other one has, has made an application, but those applications are changing. One is Julia Crowley Art Carlson's property off Woods Road, back staying towards the Tivoli Gardens. And the other one is the Sweeney property, which is both in Red Hook.
Are you not talking about multiple houses or anything like that?
Yeah, they're, they would each become, these are, one is a 27-acre parcel, the other one is an 80-acre parcel. And there will be subdivisions that will result in additional building units because-
You know how many? You don't know yet, you don't have any?
It hasn't been clarified.
Well, no, Joel, you're doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Is that off our water system, Carlson property?
No, that will be sent in.
Matthew's comment.
No, I, I want to say, the, the village has got through, we've been here since 1993, and there's some wonderful things, and it's good, I can, wonderful, I can go up the, the street and get eggs, milk, now, and get, these restaurants are really good. They're not just okay, they're really, there's a lot of good changes. There's a lot of problems, things, now, one of the, well, as far as the students, I mean, I have students, we have students next to me, I don't know what to do with them because I've called them, I called Gary Morv, fuck you, they're just noisy all the time, and they, this is loud, I mean, I'm not going to call the cops on them, they just sit there, they're talking, they're not having parties per se. I don't know what to do, I'm just sick of it. And they say, oh, they're trying to be nicer, catch nicer, I don't know what to do with these kids. And then, of course, with the party, I, I just don't know how to deal with this anymore, I really don't.
Are they making noise after 10? I mean, it doesn't have to be a party, if there are five people having a conversation after 10, it's too loud, it's too loud.
I know, I, but it's, it's annoying, they're just like the most disruptive, I mean, they come home during the day, you know, Susan works, you know, in a studio, she works at home, and they just come home, they're yakking, they've got the radios, if they have radio, I have to ask them to turn off. But anyway, I, I do have concerns, I mean, the new road, the new surface, I swear, I saw a delivery truck going at least 50 miles an hour, I'm not kidding, I mean, I can pretty much judge, coming into town, and you know, when they come over that little bump because the, they can't do anything until the sewer situation is taken care of. Now, in the past, over the years, I've called Loop, I've called the, I've called the school board, the transportation, I've called Bard, I've called the Costco, I've called all kinds of other people on my own, asking for them, and I'm really tired of being a, you know, a private person, calling these companies, you know, the, the public transportation, the, the school transportation, the trucks, and the delivery trucks are just amazing right now. At 7:00 in the morning, all that's coming in are trucks, and trucks, and trucks, dumpsters, and I'm tired of calling on my own. I don't know what you guys, what your, what you as a board can do, as a village board can do, I have no idea, but if someone could contact on, you know, instead of me having to, because they don't listen to me.
Right, well-
They don't care what I have to say, you know, I quote, it's a-
I'm happy to, I'm happy to call any company whose delivery truck is, you know, too, too fast through there, and, you know, the, the title mayor tends to get more attention than, you know, private citizen, sadly.
Well, it was, because they went by too fast. It was like a soft drinker, beer truck.
Couldn't read, couldn't read the side of the truck?
Yeah.
But no, I'm happy to, you know, make a call.
But the Bard buses go by, they don't pay attention, they go by at like 35, 40 miles an hour. I mean, when you have the speed wagon there, I can tell some of the people that, you know, there's these Bard buses that come down, it's 40, you know, 39, 40, the trucks are coming, then the Loop buses coming down at 39, 40, they would slow down usually. There's some people that never slowed down at all, in fact, some of them spun out. But if, if someone could take that off the burden and, and just- But if someone could take that off the burden and just, because there is a lot now of delivery trucks now and also construction, especially with the trucks and with the construction going down our track.
Yeah.
On the railroad right now, air truck trucks and all that stuff.
We're far from having succeeded at our speeding problem particularly in that area. So, we're going to keep working on it.
And I did notice that there's a broken, I talked to the guys, there's a broken main or something in the front of our house.
So, to fill everybody in on why, you know, we were all pretty excited that Broadway was getting repaved and then it stopped. The county discovered that some of the pipes related to stormwater drains were collapsed and, you know, until they repair those, they can't finish the road. So, that's the holdup. And if you have a problem with that, please contact your county legislator or your county executive.
That fire truck took, went for a ride because they grabbed that edge of that.
That plate?
That thing there. They've got to do something with that.
Are they going to do something? I mean, what's the?
I've written them about once a week to check in and they told me this is why it stopped and we're going to get to it and, you know.
They were here the other day.
Yeah, they've been here, but.
They were here the other day.
Was it caused by the resurfacing?
No.
No, no. They were about to actually complete the resurfacing when somebody noticed, hey, all these pipes are collapsed and we should probably fix them while we have the road torn up, so.
Well, bravo for getting the road done. I know, I was at the meeting with the bridge and I think the fire chief spoke about it too.
I think all of us here agitated a little bit.
I would have been gone by now if that road wasn't blacked out.
Well, we can't have you leave Tivoli, we got you.
And aside from having all our food, railroad materials, we all like our restaurants here, aside having all that stuff airlifted in, we're going to have trucks. We're going to have buses. We have a huge Bard student population.
We also have.
We've got, of course, we've got school kids that need to be picked up by buses.
So, we're going to have the trucks, but we should try and make sure that they don't speed.
That's what I'm concerned about. There's a lot of, as I said, they're just all going too fast. Wake us up in the morning.
Put a sign up to say you're on camera real slow now.
By the way, did you ever figure out those little?
The speed signs? Well, they're $2,500 to $3,000.
And you're still working on that?
Well, we've got a tight budget, but come around next time, maybe we'll try and put in for that. I mean, I believe that when that speed wagon is out there, many people slow down. It is better than nothing and it does have an impact. And I think if Tivoli owned one of these ourselves, even a small one, it would do something. It would be money well spent.
Put it farther west because usually it's at the bottom of the, you know what I'm saying? By then, you're already, you know.
Further west or further east?
Oh, sorry, east, yeah. Right, farther east.
Towards 9G.
Right, right.
You have about 20 of them.
You know, actually, while we're on the topic, and I've forgotten to ask the board about this, two weeks in a row now, and I'm glad we're talking about speeding, because I had a resident on Faroe Avenue who identified a sign that, as a young mother with two little kids, she liked. And I think Tivoli should maybe get some. So, you're familiar with the old children at play sign? It's that sort of 19th century skipping lad, which I think has been around so long, people don't see it anymore. There are some new signs and they say, please drive slowly, we heart our children. And they're pretty cute and I think they make the point very strongly. And this resident asked about actually getting one to put up on Faroe and I said, let me talk to the board because we have some budget line designated to sign, not the three grand for that, but I think a few of these around.
Strategically placed.
Because also, you know, with everything in our visual fields these days, you know, things, you kind of fall asleep. And I think the prancing lad just doesn't strike people anymore. So, I was thinking about getting some of these.
I like the new take as well because it also brings back that sense of, we're a small community, we do have lots of small children around here, it kind of brings that home I like it.
So, 40 bucks a pop, so maybe get a few of those. Other public comment?
I guess I'm wondering if the pocket park, if that's kind of a done deal and we're just going to try and make it not as bad as possible by this meeting.
I think that's a fair assessment. You know, we don't know what will happen on October 1st in terms of Tivolians showing up and how they respond, but the county owns the land and they are not subject to our planning board process. So, there's actually not a whole lot we could do if we wanted to not have it. And I think the feeling on the village board and the open-mindedness of the county executive is that, well, let's try and shape this thing into something that we can all live with and maybe even like.
You know, the other thing that we discussed on the board was the fact that another amenity, even if it is just a small little park there, may contribute to the overall walkability and ambiance in our village. So, it needn't necessarily be viewed as a negative thing, but there is definitely that opportunity to give your input and shape the way that the outcome is.
I think the answer to your comment is yes, but let's not.
Pick it up hours, you mean, like a cutoff hour to?
Great question for the county.
You have garbage, got garbage around town.
Get your questions ready and come on first, seriously.
Write them down and we'd love to see you on the first.
Mr. Christie.
I'll touch on about the grant the fire department got. We had to put in a grant for $132,000, like Sue said, for turnout gear and what they call a bailout system, and I'll explain both. The turnout gear is, protects firefighters from heat, getting burnt. Every firefighter has to be fitted for their own turnout gear. In the past, we've did hand-me-downs and that's kind of like a little bit, you don't want to do that because flame can get in there and steam can get in there and they can get burned. So, we applied for that grant for turnout gear for 40 sets of turnout gear. That came out to $108,000 is what that cost is for those. We also had to put in for New York State, says we have to have what they call a bailout system. It was, what they are is, they'll be incorporated into the turnout gear. It's for a firefighter, if he gets stuck on a third floor or a second floor and he's trapped, he can jump out the window and he's got ropes and stuff that he's able to hook onto and climb out the window and get out that way. That was a law that they shoved down our throats. It's $500 apiece and we're getting 48 of them, the federal government's giving us the money to buy 48 of them. New York City was the big culprits in wanting that and they became exempt from the law because they're over so many people, they don't have to have them. But they pushed for it, so we got stuck. So, anyway, they gave us the money for that. So, in total, Chuck Schumer's office called, they confirmed it, said that we're going to receive $125,725. The remaining part of that money is a 5% match that the fire company is putting up to that. So, totally $132,000. Right now, we're in the process of meeting with the vendors on which gear we want to go with, different, all different name gears and which ones we feel are more comfortable and suited and stuff. With that being said, I believe you guys have a lease program for turnout gear. I don't know when it's up. I think it's got about a year or so left on it. Once that's up, I don't believe you guys have to renew that. But just in keep in mind, 10 years down the road, this stuff is only good for 10 years. 10 years down the road, you're going to have to look at what was ever around, whatever kind of money you're looking for with that. Also, this past two weeks, we've been pretty busy. We've had a major propane leak across the street at Murray's. We had a house fire, great stop by the owner and the fire department. That could have been a lot worse than what it was. We were there quick enough, something like four minutes we were there, that was pretty quick. And then also, we had another grease fire the other night, students were cooking and they threw water on the grease and it went up the walls. He got really lucky and they were able to, they got it out when we got there. One of our issues we're finding is a lot of these rental units that we're going to, they don't have fire, they don't have any smoke alarms.
Do you give us a report of that? Because that's a violation.
Tom has been in contact with, the chief has been in contact with some of the property owners and tell them they have to put the things in and more than, you know, this particular one we went to the other night, there was only one.
When that happens, would you?
It's actually a code violation.
Excuse me, when that happens, would you also inform the village as well as the property owner because that?
I'll let Tom give you a call.
We want to know because that, you know.
It seems that every time we go into a house, it's either, there's only one in the whole entire house or it's like, you know, it's not what it's supposed to be. Supposedly in every sleeping corner outside everything.
It was, last week, there was a bunch of smoke coming, we lived down a 35, right by the bridge. There was a bunch of smoke coming, was the fire near there because?
No, the structure fire was on Woods Road.
Outside the village a little bit, right?
Yeah, just outside the village.
And the grease fire was?
The grease fire was out on 9G.
Because there was like someone burning something in it.
Yeah, the other night I came in the building, I smelled burnt wood.
It was starting to day, it was wood, it was like a sub. It was coming into the house.
For the leaves?
And the other thing people got to realize in the village of Tivoli, actually anywhere in the state of New York, it's not the village of Tivoli, you are not allowed to burn anything in a burn barrel. It's totally illegal. No garbage, no anything.
Can't burn anything.
You can't burn anything in a burn barrel. You're caught burning in a burn barrel, you're going to get issued a summons.
Well, you've got to open just a leaf pot.
You're not supposed to burn leaves. Then again, there's a law on that, if you're burning brush, it can only be so big, three inches wide is the biggest, and pile can only be so high, so wide, no leaves attached to the branches. Go on DEC's website and you can download all the information that you're going to need.
We're going to travel anyway. It's dangerous because we're going to travel anywhere right now.
Yeah, well, people don't really, really think about what they do.
Well, Tom, I want to congratulate you and the rest of the fire company for winning that grant. It's a huge achievement. Congratulations. And thank you because that is, that's a serious item that the taxpayers don't have to procure.
Yep. We're working on whatever the next year's grant is going to be, hopefully get a next year's grant. So, we're working on that.
Other comments from the public? Mr. Cleveland?
Streetlight, 71 Broadway is intermittently out most of the time at night. Talked to Linda about it. I don't know if Central Ops has been notified or not, but they're the ones that handle that.
Okay, they've been notified, we'll follow up on that.
Compound when it's dark out there, 10 o'clock at night or whatever, speeding on Broadway continues and there's skateboarders out there at 10, 11 o'clock at night, it's dark out there, you can't see them with that light out. Bad enough when there's a, the light is on. They're up and down the sidewalks, they're in the road, they're everywhere. Faroe Avenue, we're working on the one-way.
Yeah, it's going to be related to the county finishing the road and bringing in the striping company. They're not going to paint it until they finish paving it, they're not going to finish paving it until they fix the pipe, but yes, we are.
Couple days ago, the Welsh management garbage truck, those huge things, coming out there the wrong way, can't agree to sign on the other end of the street, it says one-way and they're still coming through there. If you want to change the one-way across and that, you went around the block and he came out the other way again onto Broadway.
Right, well, until we replace that one-way sign at the municipal lot, we can't fault them for that.
Both of those are one, it's still got to be enforced, there's no enforcement there going to do it. And early mornings speeding with, I assume contractors, they're pickup trucks and panel trucks, 7 o'clock in the morning down through here, it's like a speedway out here. It's unbelievable what goes on. And what else I got? Is that about it?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a question because the only time I ever see, I do see the police stopping cars, only on weekend nights, maybe Friday nights, Saturday nights, when they let out the bars and they obviously make more revenue capturing, you know, trucking drivers, but I never see them during the day, this time during the day. I know that you have to pay for the services, it's kind of crazy. But I mean, is there a way to get them at different times during rush hour?
Yes, there is.
Call them, you know, and they say, well, you know, during this time, 7 o'clock, we're changing shifts. It's crazy, they're police, you know.
Well, sadly for this village, as you all know, we don't have a police department and we spend a lot of money to contract with outside police departments. And we have to be prudent about when we schedule the patrols and I'm not going to tell you when they are because that would let everyone know when they're not here. But they, you know, we do move them around throughout the week and throughout the month, throughout the year. And, you know, the best we can do is try and to continue to be strategic about when they're here and when we think speeding's happening or when we think late-night noise is happening. And, you know, fortunately, Tivoli is patrolled by, you know, three police departments essentially, although we only contract with the Dutchess County. But we are within the township of Red Hook and sometimes you'll see a village police here working on behalf of the town and state troopers. But it's a problem that we don't have a police department, we couldn't afford one anyway, went away in the mid-'80s. And I guess we'll continue to be a challenge for Tivoli to get the sort of enforcement we need on a number of things, speeding, noise, open container, et cetera, with our limited resources.
It is helpful to know that it's Costco or it's whatever because that is something that's powerful.
I see that they bought it.
But if a Welsh truck's going the wrong way on a one-way street, that's pretty easy for us to call Welsh, we call them.
They're not the only one, the traffic is, it's like it's flowing two ways on there now. It's not just, it was a garbage truck, there's other vehicles come on there all the time.
So, keep track, Dave, and we'll call them all.
Want to take pictures?
Sure. You can do a postcard series.
Postcard series? Fire truck's on the. A vehicle truck came in this afternoon, he was going so fast. He was stuck in front of Murray's. He actually slid his tires to stop his truck. He was going that fast.
Is that the green truck there?
It was some kind of a rear truck, a beater or something on it.
Yeah, I bet you that's the one.
Any other comments from the public? I think we've covered several topics in depth. And any other comments? Yes, Tom?
I'm not that I want to put you guys on the spot or anything, but going back to the firehouse, the repairs that have to be made to the firehouse and stuff like that, we feel over there that we're beating our heads against the walls because of this prevailing wage thing that's going on. We would like the village to be, we would like the village, got people bored and stuff, to make, to put out the bids or whatever you got to do to get people to do the work.
That's exactly what's happening, so.
Because we've exhausted everything we can possibly do.
There's actually no date for that.
I've been working very hard on this last few days, Tom. And I, let's see, I called New York Conference of Mayors to understand the prevailing wage. They directed me to Dutchess County, I went back and forth with several people to county, found a nice gentleman at Dutchess County, thank you, Christopher Barclay, sent me a list of contractors who are not afraid of paying prevailing wage, who are prepared. I got that list this morning, sent three RFPs and they should be coming this week to give estimates. I know we got to get that painted before winter and, but I think if there's something.
But winter's going to be the first day in the spring. I think right now we're getting to the point where it's going to start getting too cold to apply paint.
Right. And if we have to wait till the spring because we don't want to get a bad paint job, I think we ought to do that. However, you know, if there are things like that that you'd prefer, we got the bids on, I'm happy to do.
Right now, we're here at the time, we can't get anybody to do any work inside the building because it's still prevailing wage. We can't get anybody to do any work on the outside of the building because it's prevailing wage. And the only company that I talked to about the floor in there gave me the prevailing wage price and it was, you know, it's like, you know, you go from paying non-pervailing $16,000 to prevailing wage, they want $23,000.
Right, well, unfortunately, we need to stop agonizing about paying prevailing wage because we're obligated to as a municipality. So, let's just get used to that. And if it's a pain, if it's a pain to find a contractor who will do that, I will find them, I've got a good contact at the county now. The county is also, in addition to this list of four contractors who I got in touch with today about that, the county is compiling a sort of emergency list of people who've already been procured properly, have the insurance, and municipalities like ourselves can piggyback on their list. They're creating that this month. like ourselves can piggyback on their list. They're creating that this month. And then that will be in place in the future. So next time we have something that requires it, it's not gonna be so hard. So that's the best. Yep. Anyone else? Okay, I want to thank you all for being here. And at this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
A motion was made by trustee Azradie, seconded by the deputy mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is eight-ten, and we are adjourned. Thank you.